Forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend.
Thank you very much, Reverend Fromm. Please be seated, everyone. I think so. Before we start the meeting, ladies and gentlemen and officers of this council, I note that we do have some visitors in the public gallery and I would say now that there should be no interruption to our council proceedings. So I hope you're aware of that and although you're very welcome to be with us, we will carry on our business regardless without interruption. If there is an interruption, I'll have to gavel down and we suspend the meeting. Thank you. So we start on the order of proceedings on the 13th of September 2019. Apologies for absence, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received apologies from Councilor Mrs. Killie and Councilor Spratt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of councillors' interests? None. Fine, we go on to item three, which is the minutes of the meeting the county council held on the 17th of May 2019. And I would state that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 17th of May 2019 be approved as a correct record and signed by me. All in favour? Any against? Thank you. I'll sign them later. Item four is my announcements. Since the last meeting of the county council, I have continued to carry out my civic engagements with pride. I thank the Vice-Chairman and Lady, Councillor Mike and Jackie Brooks for representing us, Trina and I, at civic functions when we have not been able to attend. I'm pleased to report that this year's Lincolnshire Show was a huge success and attracted many visitors from far and wide with the county council winning the award of the best non-agricultural stand. Quite a feat. Thank you to all who attended the annual County Council Service of Dedication in Lincoln Cathedral. Trina and I were delighted that the Lincolnshire Youth Orchestra were able to play for us before and after the service. It was a most pleasurable event for myself and Trina and we received many positive comments following the service. During my term as chairman, focusing on the importance of skills, I have been delighted to see at first hand some of the important work the council is doing to upskill its employers and residents and meet some of the learners involved. In June, I was privileged to attend our apprentice graduation afternoon, which took place in the Newland Room, where I presented certificates to the 12 employees who had successfully completed their business and administration apprenticeship through the Business Support Apprenticeship Programme. At the Lincolnshire Show, I presented learner of the year awards to three adult learners nominated by their tutors for their hard work and commitment to learning. In July, I was guest of honour at St Peter at Gouts Primary School and Trina and I attended Bracebridge Nursery and Infant School in Lincoln and I presented certificates to parents who had been attending the family learning courses delivered by this council. Next week, I will be attending as guest of honour a learning celebration event hosted by Community Learning in Partnership, commonly known as CLIP, in market raise and celebrate our learners' successes and present certificates and awards for the year 2018 and 2019. On a sadder note, I have to report the death of the following former county councillors. Graham Wheat, who represented the Grantham North Electoral Division from May 1989 until June 2009 and served as chairman of this council from May 2002 to May 2003. Peter Bray, who represented the Spalding Ellow Electoral Division from May 1989 until May 2005 and served as chairman of this council from May 2003 until May 2004. Graham Gooding, who represented the Mabelthorpe Electoral Division from June 2009 until May 2013. Mrs. Heather Judge, who represented the Boston Fishtoff Electoral Division from May 1992 until May 2005 and served as chairman of this council from June 2001 to May 2002. And finally, Air Commodore Nick Carter, OBE, who represented the Spalding South Electoral Division from June 2001 until June 2009 and served as an executive member of this council. I invite members to stand in silent tribute. Thank you, councillors and officers. Do I have any speakers at all on those that have departed from us? Councillor Mrs. Watton.
Thank you, Chairman. On behalf of Ray and I, Graham Wheat was tragically... Sorry, I do apologise. This is on behalf of Ray and I, so I'll carry on. Graham Wheat was tragically knocked over by a car outside of our two homes, robbing him of the last four years of his life due to his injuries. He was a colleague, neighbour and a dear friend. He had had the rare privilege of being county chairman, SKDC district chairman and the mayor of Grantham. When he was here, he was involved with children's and heritage services. Graham was old school RAF. He had a wealth of knowledge of RAF history and his chosen subject was the Dam Busters 617 Squadron. He belonged to numerous groups and charities and he had also been a caseworker for SAFRA. Graham was well known and loved within the community and we both miss him. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Councillor Mrs. Watton. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. It is, I think, unprecedented. We have so many of our ex-colleagues who have departed part of this world. So I'll briefly talk to each of the ones there and then hopefully other members will be able to elaborate. I'll just start with Councillor Graham Wheat. Obviously, I think Councillor Watton has very eloquently summarised him. He was a character. He was very much a strong representative of Grantham. He had a post office when he retired from the RAF. He had a post office in Grantham and was a very friendly and encouraging and a very boisterous individual, as Councillor Watton said, was chairman. Very friendly and very welcoming to everybody and I think was an extremely good councillor for his area. We then move on to Graham Gooding, who was quite unassuming. He represented Mabelthorpe, which is quite a challenge for a Conservative to be elected to Mabelthorpe. So I think that does show that of the respect he was held within that town. So he was very quiet, but he effectively and quietly represented his area. Another unassuming councillor here was actually Nick Carter. Although he was unassuming, he had no need to be unassuming because obviously he was of senior rank in the RAF and he was the executive councillor for... He actually was the finance executive councillor for finance for four years. He was also one of the band when we had our troubles, where he was one of the most loyal and steadfast. And personally, he was of great support to me. But more important than that, he was of great support to the council to make sure we eventually saw our way through those very difficult times. So unassuming, just got on with it. And actually, when he died, I don't think any of us were aware until all the services had been finished. So that was unfortunate, but a very nice man, a very unassuming man, but a very able man as well. Councillor Judge, Heather Judge, not unassuming. I don't think you'd call Heather unassuming. She was from Boston, obviously, represented Fishtoff. I think it's quite wrong here. She actually represented Fishtoff from 97 and 2005. I think I'm right in saying. So Heather was... And there is a plaque to Heather outside in the quad, actually, when I've forgotten what we opened out there. She was very full of beans and you knew Heather when she was here. Again, quite clear about what she wanted to achieve and quite clear if she wasn't getting her way or the way that she wanted for her residence. She wasn't slow in coming forward. The final one then is Peter Bray, who is obviously a very gentleman. He is represented here by his daughter, so his legacy rings. So Elizabeth, I'm sure Elizabeth Sneath will say a few words. Peter Bray was very much a gentleman, a funeral director and walked at the gate of a funeral director. He had all the attributes. A very long-standing member, very gentlemanly and actually stood for the right things. And all of those people will be sadly missed. But I'm sure there are other members who would like to talk to those they knew earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hill. Councillor Mrs. Sneath is going to speak, but before that, we have Councillor Mrs. Talbot, followed by my Councillor Mrs. Bradwell. Councillor Mrs. Talbot.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, it was quite sad this morning when I came in and found my order of proceedings for today's meeting. I've been here so long, I knew all the people mentioned on the paper today. I'd just like to refer briefly to two of those members. Firstly, to Graham Wheat. And somehow, I feel responsible for his accident on the Manthorpe Road in December. I can't remember which year it was. Do forgive me. Sorry, 15. Graham was taking my Christmas card across Manthorpe Road to give to Linda and Ray to bring into the office and sadly, he was hit by a car. So I feel very responsible. I haven't been in touch with Rhoda and Myra, his two daughters, but we'll be doing so shortly. I'd also like to make mention and pay tribute to Air Commodore Nicholas Timothy Carter, OBE. I was astounded when he arrived here because he looked vaguely familiar. And it wasn't until in the executive office, he brought in a photograph that was taken somewhere between 1965 and 67. He was a young pilot officer stationed at RAF Maharrack on the island of Bahrain, where my father was serving his OC Admin Squadron. So Nick remembers me. I don't remember Nick, but he said I was always too busy with the pilots on 208 Squadron. So think about that. So it's not only Nick Carter, of course, who has a history of knowledge of me. So does someone else who's still on the council, but we won't go there. It's very sad that all these people have passed nearly within a few months of each other. And my sadness is that Nick's memorial or obituary in The Telegraph was just a simple two-line piece that said, "Air Commodore Nicholas Timothy Carter, OBE, died on the 21st of May 2019 and a service will take place on the 19th of June." Nobody knew when that service was. And it wasn't until I spoke to former councillor William Webb, when I was telling him that Heather Judge had died, that I discovered that the funeral had taken place and in fact, none of us were there. So I'm not sure what Hildgaard and the family thought. None of us were there to represent the council. So it is sad when these occasions happen. And I pay tribute to all of them and I send my deepest condolences to their families.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs. Bradwell.
Well, I like Councillor Talbot in thinking of why I like working with Mr. John Tyler, who is here today. In particular, I mean, Graham Wheat worked very closely, very involved in education on the council and actually did so much for children with blind. He visited...
I'm sure people can hear me. I've got a fog on. And he did so much for young people who were blind, who represented the council. And so I do, you know, remember working with Graham and he was so passionate about doing the very best for children, young people in this county. Again, Nick Carter, I mean, obviously, when I came on the executive, Nick joined us all at the same time. He was a very unassuming man, but very, 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 very good with figures. Kept us on the straight and narrow. And I worked with Nick quite a bit at that time because we're trying to work... We're overspending in social care and we're going to do a lot of school building. So Nick and I worked very closely on finance. And he was a gentleman, but you could not get anything past him. He was there and on the marks all the time. Heather again, Heather Judge, when I first joined the council, Heather joined with me, but Heather did a lot with adult social care and children's. And again, I was on the... At that time, we had a social care committee. I worked on that. So I knew Heather, got to know Heather very well. As Councillor Hill said, Heather was very, very passionate about Boston. She was always fighting for Boston and, you know, I remember so much in committee meetings, a bit like Councillor Austin. Boston, you know, you had a voice there, championing where she lived. And Peter Bray, obviously, I didn't work with Peter that much. I knew Peter. My husband sort of works... He worked with Peter because obviously Peter was an undertaker. So I knew Peter and had many a long chat with him. He was a very interesting gentleman. And obviously Graham as well. Graham wasn't with us for very long, but I know at East Lindsay, he was an East Lindsay district councillor for some time. And everybody on this list, you know, made a great contribution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mrs. Sneath.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd like to say a few words, more on a personal note about my father. He represented Spalding Ellow for 16 years and loved his time on this council. He and my mother were married for 67 years and his year as chairman here was an absolute highlight for them both. They absolutely loved that. My election as councillor for Spalding Ellow was a fulfilment of his belief in the value of public service. And on behalf of my mother and sisters, thank you all so much for all your cards, messages and phone calls of sympathy. They were much appreciated by us all. And it meant such a lot to me and my mother to have so many councillors from here and from the district council at his funeral recently. That meant a lot. Thank you very much. But on a lighter note, as you know, he was an undertaker and we'd always have the joke, "Who buries the undertaker?" We now know, your daughters do, because my sister and I arranged his funeral. So thank you all so much anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Mrs. Sneath. Councillor Skinner, I believe, was next to speak, yes?
Thank you, Chairman. Mrs. Heather Judge represented Boston Fishtoff and as Councillor Hill has described, she was an effective lady. I first met her as a school governor at Fishtoff and her other half, Maurice, who both served the community at that time. And both worked for the good of the parish, should be sadly missed. And I actually attended the funeral, so it didn't go amiss from the point of view of the county council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone who has spoken on that. We come on to... Councillor Parker.
Sure. One of the things that stands out is the amount of public service that these five departed councillors have given. If we look at the list, we start with Graham Wheat with 20 years' service, Peter Bray with 16 years' service, Graham Gooding with four years, Heather Judge with eight years and another eight years for Nick Carter. So we've got a total of eight and eight, 16, 20, 36, 56 years' service. And that says a lot. It also says, I suppose, a lot about the turnover on the council because I would suspect a good number of members here would not know any of the people that are here. But what we have got are three former chairman of the council and executive member. Those people that were respected in their time, certainly in the controlling groups because of the way that they managed to become chairman and members of the executive. I happened to be elected on the same day as Graham Wheat and Peter Bray. The benefit for them was that they were part of the council that was controlled by Labour and Liberal Democrats at that time, although they probably didn't see it in that way. Life went then back to normal and they rose, in essence, to senior positions. You don't get re-elected that easily unless you're doing something right in your area. So we can not just assume, but we can know that these were councillors that were respected in their local communities. Five people that have gone and will be missing them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those tributes. A list of civic engagements relating to the immediate past chairman and vice-chairman are listed and available from the civic officer. We now move on to item number five, which is statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Statements by the members of the executive are detailed as report reference five in the agenda previously circulated. Item number six. Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon, Councillor Hill.
Just one brief, well, brief statement, Chairman. We obviously had a debate about climate change at the last council meeting and there was lots of helpful suggestions as to the best way forward. So from next month, the executive have agreed to go paperless with their meetings as a step towards moving forward. And obviously, we are with the use of modern.gov, which we have all access to, that there will be some training for each committee, as we discussed at group leaders, so that if members want to access that, then the committees themselves can then decide or not whether they also wish to become paperless. I think the Conservative group certainly will be going paperless in regard to the council meeting in December. So we'll hopefully not be carrying around, lugging around this stuff. I gather there's an issue about order of the green sheets, which probably need to be done. But I think we are trying to make a step forward in terms of going paperless for all sorts of reasons. And obviously, there is new technology being rolled out which will help us and staff to do that, which is in terms of Windows 10 and Office 365, which will enable both us and officers to actually be much more efficient, both in terms of cost savings but also in terms of saving carbon emissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hill. Right, item six on our agenda is questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors, chairman of committees and subcommittees. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across this chamber. So I expect councillors to be disciplined, which would help, because of the time available, which is 45 minutes. When invited to ask their question, councillors should press the large button on their microphones to make it live and press it again, excuse me, to switch it off once they have finished speaking. The first speaker I have is Councillor Thompson to Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Richard. My question is about the Lincoln Western Growth Corridor. On the 22nd of May this year, Highways England provided a response to the City of Lincoln council in respect of its Western Growth Corridor planning application and issues affecting the A46 Skellingthorpe roundabout with a recommendation that planning permission not be granted for a three-month period and setting out further assessments required. This project has serious implications for the residents of my division and for Lincolnshire County Council as local highways authority. Since the three-month period has now expired, can Councillor Davies please provide any update? Thank you.
Is it switched on?
It is now. I'm assuming you mean the microphone, Chairman, not me? Thank you. Very good question and our members across the chamber will be aware of how contentious and potentially dangerous this project is in terms of traffic congestion. The summer saw quite extensive number of concerns raised, both locally but also by Highways England. As a result of that, a number of workshops have been undertaken involving local organisations, the local authority and the applicants. And as a result of that, plans are being reformed. I think a new traffic assessment is being done this autumn with the review to proposals coming forward again approaching Christmas time, when we'll again be looking at it in some more detail. And obviously, we'll be keeping members, both local and wider afield, as informed as we can do, noting that we aren't the decision-makers for the project. We are just a consultancy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Councillor Kevin Clark for Patricia Bradwell.
Morning. Councillor Bradwell, can you give an update on the dispute with the Health Visitors, including when will the county council return to talks? I understand there has been no talk since August 15th. Thank you.
Try now. That's better.
Mine's on now. I can speak.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you. Yes, I'm happy to update council. Obviously, members will have been having briefings before we broke for the summer break. I just want to explain that Health Visitors did come, transferred to the council some while ago. And we actually, since joining the council, we have now got a full complement of 140 working for us. When they transferred from the Community Health Authority, we had a lot of vacancies across this council, very, very understaffed and especially in some of our areas of deprivation. The East Coast, Lincoln and that were very low. So we have been able, since we've had Health Visiting in the county, to actually increase and recruit to a full complement. We have a dispute over pay and what we've also done, we've extended our pay scale beyond that offered by the NHS and staff can move on to these grades through a career progression portfolio. So it's not that we're not working with the staff. We have offered like-for-like pay grade for them. Yes, Unite is a union who are representing. There's 10 people who've been striking. But initially, it was about local issues and pay. Now it's about a national campaign and a national campaign of Labour as well. And we're not in local discussions anymore on terms and conditions because obviously ACAS said, I think it was in July, the last meeting, that there was no point in meeting. We were too far away and actually, ACAS had changed what we were talking about initially. This was now about national issues, not about our local issues here, which initially had been brought up. As I say, we are focusing at the moment on working with our workforce. We want a motivated workforce who deliver excellent services to our families. It's most important that... It's most important that mums who come out of hospital have the health visitor there. And we, you know, really do support everything that health visitors do. They work now with our early help teams. And in the main, most health visitors are happy working here. But we have 10, as I say, who've been striking. And at the moment, we won't be going into discussions with ACAS at the moment because, as I say, they've changed what we were initially discussing.
Thank you. Next is councillor Chris Brewis for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you very much, Richard. If I'd like to very publicly, in everybody's presence, thank you twice. First of all, for coming over early on the Saturday morning and so promptly working with the police to move on our unwelcome visitors on county council land. I think all the population of Suttonbridge and businesses and surrounding villages express their deep gratitude to you. And I'm grateful to you for coming down shortly to look at where we may be able to improve that. But I particularly want also to say that we've got enormous works about to be done, necessary works, on the Crosskey Swing Bridge. And I think the receptive way in which suggestions from all directions were listened to has resulted in what is probably a very adaptable, one-way working system. And my question really is, are we now going to ensure where similar situations arise, that we do the same thing and consult people and maybe become a national pilot, an example of how these troublesome times can be dealt with? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, just being heckled by the leader there, sorry. In terms of coming down to address the issue, and it was a very hot Sunday, Saturday morning, it was quite disturbing, actually. And I paid tribute to you and the volunteers who cleaned up after the mess. I think there were bin bags of the most unpleasant kind of material left behind by the individuals who turned up. It was unfortunate, it had to happen, and it's a difficult situation. And I think it's something we need to work better with our district council colleagues to try and mitigate the impact of that. In terms of how we deal with construction projects and how we take advice, I think you're absolutely right. Just this morning, I was talking to councillor Ron Oxby, who had talked about feeding into an issue he'd had on Cannick Hill, and how by some small adjustments on some traffic lights made a huge difference to the queuing traffic. And I think at times, nobody in this council chamber will believe me, I'm sure, that sometimes we felt to be a bit distant and arrogant, maybe, and we don't necessarily listen. But I think what has happened at Suttonbridge in the past is a really good example of by listening to some local experiences and tweaking traffic lights and plans and programmes, we can make life a lot easier for local residents. It's not always possible to do everything that's suggested, I know you're only too fully aware of, but that's a good example, and I think we should do more of it, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Next, we have last year's chairman, councillor Ron Oxby, to Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. And I trust you and team are having a successful few months on your chairmanship. My question is regarding roads, again, of course. I was informed by Highways a week or so ago that the C113 road, which links Hayington to Cannick Village and on to Cannick Hill, which was closed last November and was scheduled to reopen this October due to work on the eastern bypass, has now had this road closure extended by a staggering three months, this to the end of January 2020. Can councillor Davies update us on the situation and why this has occurred? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was great timing, wasn't it? Thank you for the question, councillor Oxby. In short, the road has been closed and we are applying for an order to potentially keep it closed for a bit longer. It's not guaranteed, but what we're trying to do is, obviously, this is part and parcel of the Lincoln Eastern Bypass works, is give ourselves some flexibility should we need to keep it closed for a little bit longer while the construction works are underway. I have to say, I thank the local residents and the local member for keeping them informed. We've had a remarkable low level of complaints and issues around that road closure. So I'd thank him for his work in keeping his residents informed.
Thank you. Councillor Graham Cullen is next, again to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman, thank you, Richard. There is no secondary school in Mabelthorpe. The first day back at school, the children were left at the bus stop. There was not enough buses put on. Parents did ring me to tell me, so I went the next day, and the bus company, our local bus company, had to put an extra bus on. The parent wants to know why they want enough buses put on for the children to be taken to school. Because don't forget, there is no, there is no secondary school in Mabelthorpe. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cullen, for the question. My apologies, I'm not aware of that in any detail, I'll happily take it away. It could be if it was a service issue rather than a dedicated schools transport issue, that it was just about the service provider not being quite up to speed with the expectation. I'll look into it and come back to you. But thank you for getting down there and looking at it for us.
Next is councillor Mary Anne Overton to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you. As you know, we've been working cross-party with the Local Government Association and the County Council's network, which is part of that organisation, in negotiations for better funding for local governments. And of course, then Lincolnshire gets its share. And we have just announced a three-and-a-half billion pounds extra, half of that from local council tax and half devolved from income tax. So noting that substantial increase, I wonder if councillor Hill sees an opportunity to resolve some of those really difficult problems in our area. For example, one that I've got in my area in particular is where we have rural parts of our county where we have businesses running, but they cannot access the broadband. And despite the grants and the £40 million, I think it was, that went in, huge amounts of public money that went in, we still have rural areas that are considered too rural and therefore don't qualify for the funding they need. So we've got businesses that are bereft of straightforward broadband service. Thank you. I think it might fall between two people there.
Yes, thank you for the question. Obviously, it is, and I pay tribute particularly to the CCM but also the LGA for the continued lobbying which has gone on to the government to highlight the funding issues which all councils, of course, including this one, have been subject to. So yes, it was good news that we had some positive announcements from the chancellor last week. But of course, that is only an aspiration, of course, because as we are well aware, the House, there is no real overall control of anybody currently in the House of Commons. So it's all right making the speech, but obviously, that then has to be passed through the House of Commons. And at this time, it's very difficult to understand what exactly that, how that will turn out. And there was some good news, but also the disappointing news, I suppose, was there are three issues where there hasn't been resolution. First of all, the fare of funding has been deferred for a year. And of course, we are hopeful that that will solve many of our, or some of our funding issues. So that's, we have to wait another year. In other words, we're promised now that the new changes will be coming in in 2021. But again, we're not sure whether the new department, the new MHCLG department are as enthusiastic about seeing through or not. Secondly, of course, the also deferred is the business rates review. And again, depending on what sort of formula they use, that could be very bad news or could be good news, and we just don't know. And the final uncertainty, of course, is the funding of adult social care, which of course, again, has been deferred. The green paper has, I think, I mean, we're still waiting. And then again, there are aspirations from the new prime minister that he's going to sort it out. But again, all this has got to be published and all this has got to get through a House of Commons at some time. So although the aspiration is there and very welcome, it just means by no sense means that the money will arrive and all our problems are over. Could I just say on broadband, which has been a very successful project in this county, I pay tribute to councillor Davies for overseeing it and previous portfolio holder, we actually are approaching 97% coverage now. And there is still a pot of money left because of the deal that we did originally with British Telecom, that open reach, so to speak. So there is still some money available to reach those areas. I know, similar to councillor Overton, I have remote areas and small villages. I personally am quite confident that small settlements now, and that's where we're getting to, will be connected up. There will remain a challenge about isolated farmhouse houses, but I'm confident that even under the current arrangements, funding-wise, that we will get there. Whether it'll be, it could be not on cable, it could be on something else, or fibre, should I say. But of course, additionally, the government has made some, again, positive announcements about further support. So I think we will get there. And all I could say is compared to many other rural areas, we are far ahead of the game. 97% is excellent, but of course, if you're one of the 3%, you feel even more left out. But I can assure councillor Overton, notwithstanding what happens with the funding, we will get there with making sure these smaller communities. And I understand there will be some further announcements in the new year as to the further rollout, so the very small communities can then access this valuable service.
Thank you very much. Councillor Richard Buttry to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Hill, you briefly touched on it there, but I just wondered whether you would update us fully on the chancellor's announcements last week.
And as I've just said, these are aspirational, but good news indeed. So there's been a lot of lobbying in terms of, if members will recall, last year, we got a settlement and then there was some additional money put in by the government because there was highlights in particular issues around social care and special educational children's services. So what the government's intention is, is that that additional money will be repeated this year. We are still into one settlement year notices at the moment, so it's very difficult to plan ahead. There's an extra £1 billion gone into social care, £700 million, this is nationally, of course, we didn't get a billion, billion pounds into social care, £700 million into special educational needs, that will go direct to schools. Unfortunately, there's no money for us to service that, so that will actually is a cost on the council. But it's very welcome that the schools actually have got the money directly to help manage that problem. Troubled families are due to get some more money, public health will get some additional, I think, with inflation money. BCF, which is a big issue for us, because the one thing I didn't mention in the previous answer is that is a huge lump of money now, well over £50 million. And if that goes and is not replaced adequately, that will be a big trouble for us. Again, that creates the uncertainty. So but for the next year, BCF, IBCF, which is the bit we control, Better Care Fund, that is, will go up by 3.4%. There is planned to be a 2.7% increase on the base funding, whatever that means. What base are they talking about? I don't know. Business rates will be upgraded. And of course, we know about the Stronger Town Fund, which I believe there are three or four towns, including Lincoln, which will be able to bid for that money as well. So all of that is very positive, but all I can do is repeat the previous statement that the intent is there. The delivery might prove a little bit difficult until the House of Commons gets sorted out one way or the other.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Robin Renshaw for councillor Mrs Patricia Bradwell.
Thank you, chairman. Just on a point of information about the happy workforce of health visitors. I was just outside the front there because there were protesting this morning, you probably didn't realise that. But there's a lady there that's been a health visitor for many years, transferred from the National Health Service to the Lincolnshire County Council, and she's resigned her post, and we can't afford to lose staff. And she was almost in tears, you know. So it's not, happy workforce is not, doesn't ring true with my idea of one. Anyhow, I'm going to ask a question about the health visitors to councillor Bradwell. Can you provide a written response detailing the structure of the service to include how many G10 and G9 graded posts are required in each office location? I've asked this because I understand from the health visitors that G9 staff are expected to perform G10 work without the appropriate level of remuneration. Thank you.
Yep, we can supply that information for you. I don't quite understand that, so we'll write, we'll write a written note to you, yeah. Because I don't want to say something, can it not be quite right? I wouldn't want that. But I would dispute what you've just said. Yes, we have a small cohort of staff who aren't happy with being within the local authority. They do want to transfer back to health. And actually, you know, if they want to do that, they want to do that, if they want to work for a health authority who has health visitors. What I'm trying to say to this council is that the working relationship with our health visitors and our early help workers and social workers, they're all working together. And for me, it's about providing an all-rounded service to our families in Lincolnshire. And that is what's happening now, it wasn't happening before. And I'm just thinking of the residents and families in Lincolnshire also have our health visitors, but we have to provide the best service we can to families.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Paul Key to councillor Sue Woolley.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Woolley, please can you tell me why a doctor's surgery in Gainsborough has had meetings about closing? And I have not been invited or even told about these meetings. Have any consultation meetings taken place? Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, it will go on now.
Right, that's better. Well, as you know, the GP surgeries actually come under the local CCGs. And surgeries in Gainsborough come under the Lincolnshire West CCG. I am very happy to meet you out of here and get that information because you haven't actually said which GP surgery. And so if we can get that information, I'm very happy to either give you the details of who you need to contact within the CCG or indeed, I will do that for you, but happy to follow through on that.
Thank you. Next is councillor Paul Skinner for councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, Colin. Good news last week when the government announced town deals for Skegness, Mabelthorpe, Lincoln, and of course, my hometown, Boston. These deals are worth, if the maximum monies can be accessed, up to £25 million. Can councillor Davy advise how we will work with all of our partners in these four locations to ensure that the opportunity to pull in some £100 million to Lincolnshire via these deals is maximised? Thank you.
Councillor Davy.
Thank you very much, councillor Skinner. Very happy to respond on this question. I think the first thing to say is at least it's very pleasing to see that government nationally has now recognised that towns are as important as cities in driving the nation's economy forward. And I think this is an opportunity we obviously have to embrace. It can make a real difference, obviously, to those communities that have been named in the town funding deal. And it also gives us the opportunity to show to our government that proposed investments in these towns will provide substantial benefits, not just locally, but also to the nation's economy. District councils have been asked to lead on these bids for the town funding in all the towns that you've identified. And also, it's important to note that Hole Beach and Grantham have received additional funding through a further funding stream. So we need to work with them as well. We all know that strong bids are ones that show ambition, they're transformational, they have a commitment to delivery and are led by joined-up partnerships, not by one organisation in isolation. So it is important we all work together. I will work therefore very closely with our district council colleagues, I'll work with the business community and the LEAP, and with others like the Growth Hub in Lincolnshire, so we can create the strongest possible bid for each of these places. It is important we get the most out of this opportunity as we can. We're going to have a named officer point of contact for each bid. And shortly, my officers will arrange meetings with partners from all of the towns that have the opportunity for funding to make sure that we collectively work together so Lincolnshire's bids stand the greatest chance of success. Councillor Poll and I have already met with East Lindsay at a political level this week about this very issue and a load of other issues we talked about, and we're planning meetings elsewhere across the area. On Monday, I will be in Boston at a Team Lincolnshire event, which has been held to promote Boston's PE21 to the local and regional investment community, and I'm sure we'll talk further at that event. And finally, I just want to say, those towns that did not succeed in this bidding round, it is in... it is important they continue to work with us and look forward to the next round of funding, so we could try and get some more of the places in Lincolnshire that do need support and opportunity to get into this funding process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is councillor Sarah Parkin for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Hill, it's really good to hear what you're saying about your commitment within the executive and within the group to go paperless, and I'm pleased that you're following in my example that I set at the end of the last council meeting when I made it quite clear that that was the way I wanted to work. So I think the more of us that do that, the better, that's fantastic. What I'd like to know is what are you prepared to do now, how are you prepared to move this forward? East Lindsay District Council are in the process of commissioning extra support to help them develop a carbon management plan that will help them understand their current carbon footprint and how they can reduce it in a speedily way. We've also started to scope a scrutiny piece of work for members to take part in to work in parallel with that work, and I would ask that as an executive, you follow the East Lindsay lead by doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I'm very pleased that East Lindsay District Council is catching up with what the county council has been doing for some time. I'm not sure councillor Parkin is aware, but we have had a, here it is, a carbon management plan for many years now, going back to two thousand and nine. So we have reduced our carbon emissions throughout that plan by about forty percent, I believe, off the top of my head, since two thousand and nine, and recently the executive then agreed that we would plan to decrease our carbon emissions by a further twenty percent within the next five years, I believe. So we already, I mean, I think in Lincolnshire and in this council, we actually believe in doing things rather than just posturing. I'm not saying you can posture and do things, but we just like to get on with it. So we've been very successful, and here it is, the carbon plan for the next, which was agreed earlier, which we've successfully implemented by being, using common sense proposals, which not only save money, but of course also more importantly save carbon emissions for the residents of the county. Sometimes it can be controversial, of course, and I would quote the switching off of the street lights at night, and some street lights have, or road lights have gone off permanently, and obviously that sometimes does cause some issues, but we are prepared to bite some bullets and actually get on with it. So there is an established plan which we are working through, and we've got a plan, and also we then need, with the support of all members, to actually work out how we, the details, the additional details, how we'll deliver that further twenty percent reduction. I think we do need to be practical, and personally, I think, thinking that we can go all electric cars in this county by twenty thirty is fantasy land because we haven't got, we haven't got the infrastructure, we haven't got the electricity at the moment, and it's quite a complicated issue, the issue, because everybody seems to think electricity's the solution, they don't then think about where does all this electricity come from and how is it produced. Although we do have wind farms, they unfortunately cannot produce a constant stream, so if you've got a dark, windy, a windless night, unless you've got something else coming forward producing your electricity, everybody will have no power. So I think we're doing a lot, and I'm very pleased that East Lindsay is catching up with us, and other councils, in the district councils in the county, including Lincoln City, again, would be good if they, they've said a lot of statements, but they do need to produce a carbon plan, and if they want any help to do that, we are more than willing to oblige.
Thank you very much. Next is councillor Alison Austin for councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, chairman. You're in demand, councillor Davy, as regards Boston. Right, councillor Davy, you have been proactive in promoting the county in the run-up to twenty twenty, the four hundredth anniversary of the sailing of the Mayflower to America. The year twenty thirty, however, will be a far more important anniversary for Lincolnshire when we mark the four hundredth anniversary of the founding of Boston, Massachusetts. Although centred on Boston, this anniversary will include communities in Lincolnshire far wider than just the borough of Boston. Towns and villages, to name just a few, such as Alford, Tattersall, Semperingham and Spalding are just some of those whose men and women played important roles in shaping the USA as we know it today. In what way will you and your successors be able to prepare for the major opportunity for tourism, especially from the American market, and heritage that this anniversary will offer to our county? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin, for the question. As you know, I'm very, very passionate about connectivity around the world, and particularly with America, and Mayflower does present a huge opportunity, as we know. To date, we have been working with the Visit Britain's Discover England Fund, that's been led, Mayflower Four Hundred nationally has been led by Emma Tatlow, who some of you will know as the former head of Visit Lincoln, and obviously our tourism manager, Mary Powell, has also been heavily involved in the national steering group for the celebrations. She's also involved in the local steering group, which I'm sure you know, for Lincolnshire and Nottinghamshire in relation to the Mayflower connections. It is important, as you rightly say, that the project has longevity, and it is important to reach out over that span of ten years up to the twenty thirty founding of Boston. Through the work that has been done, we have been working across the US connections base, so it includes Boston, of course, the Boston area. We've been working through the, what's called the Discover England Fund, and there's going to be a new round of funding this autumn, where they're going to evaluate the work that's been done to date, what's been successful, what hasn't, and what needs to be done for the long-term programme, which is that span through to twenty thirty. So you can rest assured, twenty thirty is on my agenda, and it's decisions we make collectively at a national level over the next year or so that will determine the success of that. What I would say, there is already strong indications that there will be a lot of American visitors coming to Lincolnshire next year. We're hearing from hotels that they're getting a lot of American bookings, so quite clearly the work that's already been undertaken by the Four Hundred Committee to attract Americans to visit the UK and to visit the connections of Mayflower and the wider areas is paying fruit. We need to make sure it continues after twenty twenty all the way through to twenty thirty. And I, my commitment, will do that.
Thank you very much, councillor Davy. Next up is councillor Tom Ashton for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Davies. Last month, the B eleven ninety-two in my division saw the second fatal motorcycle accident at Langrick in three years. This junction with the B eleven eighty-three has a locally notorious reputation for accidents. Could you please lend your support and that of the excellent highways team to assist with my efforts and those of the local community to reduce and extend speed limits in this area, and also to look at the B eleven ninety-two end-to-end from Coningsby to Langrick Bridge to see what we can do further to reduce speed and improve safety? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, councillor Ashton. I'm very sorry to hear about the accident. I think we need to be careful not to say that per se speed is an issue, and speed limits by themselves don't necessarily make roads safer, especially if they're inappropriate and they're not enforced, but I'll absolutely work with yourself and the Road Safety Partnership to see what can be done in that area to make the roads safer.
Thank you. Next is councillor Rob Parker for councillor Patricia Bradwell.
You'll be aware that back in February, March, the CQC came to Lincolnshire and did an inspection of the health visiting service. A report was subsequently published. You'll also be aware that, I think it was in July, the Scrutiny Committee for Children and Young People's Services looked at a report which included reference to the report by the CQC, but not in its entirety. The report commented in relation to health visiting, we had received eleven contacts from staff before, during and following our inspection. We found staff morale was very low in some areas of the county, with a number of staff experiencing a different, difficult transition moving from their previous organisations to Lincolnshire County Council. Some of the staff who contacted us or who spoke to us told us they were frightened to speak out about their feelings because of retribution. We, that's the inspectors, fed this back to senior managers at the end of our inspection. A number of staff we spoke with told us they felt undervalued and that the provider was trying to mould them into a social services delivery model because the wider organisation did not understand the health service they provided. Now, that information wasn't available directly to the scrutiny committee because there was a, what we might call a synopsis of the inspection report, which was quite detailed, but it didn't mention any of those. I wondered if you'd like to make a comment on those two points, the detail of what the CQC said and the fact that the scrutiny committee, and I think we're all recognising the benefits of scrutiny, but scrutiny needs up-to-date information, it also needs complete information, so the comments on those two areas.
Having a health visitor today, today, so yes. Well, I would say that any councillor can actually pull down a report that we've had. So if any councillor wanted to have that report in detail, they could, and as you know, we can't, we couldn't put that full CQC report into that document that went to scrutiny. But what I would say to you about the CQC inspection, it was, it was a positive inspection. Yes, we know we've got ten people striking as health visitors. Yes, it's not all, some of them don't want to be with the county councillors, as I've said previously, they don't, they don't want to work within a local authority, they want to work in a health environment, and we can't help that. We've brought the health visiting back, we believe it's working in a much better way for families. You know, if, if, if a number of health visitors don't, don't like that, well then, I can't help that. And as you've, it's been said this morning, as councillor Renshaw said, a few people are saying now that they don't want to stay and work for the local authority, they want to move back to the health authority, and that's, that's all well and good, but actually, this is only, this is eleven people they spoke to out of a hundred and forty staff. So if, if fifty staff were saying that, I'd be quite concerned. But we know it's a different way of working in a local authority to what it is in the health authority. And, you know, as I've said before, it is all about the service that is delivered to children, to children and families. We do need to look after our staff, I quite understand that, and I will have a word with Heather, who has been, Heather Sunday, who's been looking after and is responsible for health visitors, and we'll take your comments on board. But actually, there was a number of comments in that CQC report which were quite, quite inaccurate. They were talking about toys not being washed every day in a children's centre. You know, we can't, it was all about them, they were working in a hospital environment, they didn't understand the environment of a local authority and children's centres.
Thank you. Final speaker is councillor Matthew Fido for councillor Richard Davies.
So as a representative of a Lincoln division, I'm very much looking forward to seeing the completion of the Lincoln Eastern Bypass. I think I speak for all the Lincoln representatives in the surrounding areas when I say that. Again, commending the highways team on the, on the completion of the first roundabout. Drove across it a number of times first for work and personally, very impressed with how round it is. Would you be able to give the council a further update on progress of the Lincoln Eastern Bypass? And again, I've seen also reports in local media about discussions that have been had regarding the Southern Relief Road as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the commentary. I mean, it's not, notwithstanding the issues this road has had with Corillian and then Hawkes, there have been some delays to the project, and it's a compliment to the team and the new contractors that it's, it's on track, it's on programme, and it's on budget. I think the next big piece of work we're going to see is the wide-up coming in towards the end of the month, and there will be some more road, quite extensive road closures coming in, and that's going to make a huge difference to the project. We're still on track for kind of middle of next year for the road to be open, which is good news, but I would say in terms of further information, I know a number of members from across the chamber have done it, do take the opportunity to come on one of the site visits. It's actually quite breathtaking when you look at the size of a kind of a hundred million pound road scheme, the amount of material that's been moved, the infrastructure that's going in, particularly the river crossings stand out as being huge and substantial, and the difference it's going to make shouldn't be understated. You know, conventionally at the moment, we have all of that traffic going past very close to the cathedral, the busiest road in Lincolnshire is going to be impacted by this, and we're going to see something like a twenty-five percent reduction in traffic on Broadgate as a result of that, which is great news for Lincoln, undoubtedly, but I think more importantly perhaps is moving that strategic A fifteen out of the city centre means that that north-south connectivity, which is so often a problem here in Lincolnshire, will be addressed, because no longer are we going to have that bottleneck, Mr Chairman, which makes it so difficult for businesses and the travelling public at times. It's just an example of one of the two, three, an increasing number of capital schemes we've got going on in the county, and I'm pleased to be leading on those. In terms of North Icam Relief Road, I was particularly impressed that Midlands Connect and the Midlands Engine Grouping have listed it as one of their top priorities regionally for government funding. It will be a huge piece of infrastructure which will connect up and move traffic out of North Icam, but also provide a proper ring road for the city, which I think a city of Lincoln's stature and size really does need, and it provides that additional capacity because sometimes there are problems, you know, roadworks and, and forbid, accidents, and without that ability to get round, too often the road we have, the road we have around Lincoln at the moment is snarled up, and this will provide us that extra capacity. It started a long time ago, you know, I think the first properties on Station Road that were secured for this project were before I was a member of the authority and was probably still, still in short trousers. So it shows that none of this stuff happens quickly, but I think the fact that, that regionally, colleagues in other all local authorities have recognised this project as being advanced enough and having the benefits to bring forward, that they're supporting it, does show us the, some of the benefits of regional working.
Thank you very much. That concludes all the questions, and so we move on to item seven, which is the proposed statement of community involvement, and a report by the executive director place has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, chairman. I'm going to move the paper, I assume members have read it, I'm sure they'll be delighted that we're going paperless since it makes up a large part of today's agenda. Statements of community involvement are important, they engage how we deal with representations coming in on minimum and waste planning applications. I'm not going to talk through the paper, it's there in front of you, I'm sure members have read it. I'll move the paper, it's been to the executive and been approved to be brought to council for adoption today. Thank you.
Is there a seconder for that proposition?
Yeah, thanks, chairman. I'll accept the motion and also reserve my right to speak later.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any speakers on this item of the agenda? No? In that case, we'll go to the vote. Those in favour, please show. Any abstentions? Then that is carried, thank you very much indeed. Item eight is the review of financial performance, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. A report by the executive director of resources has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder?
Thank you, chairman. Executive responsible for resources, I'd like to move this paper, this is an annual event, so following the outturn of our accounts in, in the early summer, which obviously was positive news for the council, congratulate departments for underspending and our frontline spending, our day-to-day spending underspent by about just over one percent, which is good to hit that target. There was a more substantial underspend due to other factors in terms of other services to be used. So outlined in the report is what to do with that money which has been carried forward, and if you've read the report, you'll see in addition to the one percent which is, every department is allowed to carry forward, so there's been a programme, and in there, there's a programme where that one percent will be spent on. In addition, we put additional money into some sort of reserves, if you like, in terms of civil parking enforcement, risk management, and winter water, and, and also winter maintenance, of course, we had, that reserve was depleted as well, and also a reserve for highways and transport grants, because some and transport grants, because sometimes we do need to match up funding which comes from government. So in addition to that, you know, we then, proposing that some money then is put into reserves, as I've stressed earlier, that although it is tempting to spend even more money, and I have to say that unlike many authorities, we have not resorted to having overspends, particularly in adult social care and special educational needs, we are very tightly managed in those areas, so we've managed to control it, and I would recommend these, these proposals to the council. I understand there is going to be an amendment, but I would just say, due to the national uncertainty, particularly about funding, we need to be a bit patient a bit longer, and then obviously we can make some, once we know the long-term future, then we can make some sensible long-term decisions about what the, what we need to do for the health of the county. So I'd like to move those recommendations.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that proposition?
Yes, thank you, Sir Chairman, I'd like to second that proposal, and I would like to reserve my right to speak later on, thank you.
Thank you. We have received an amendment from the Labour Group. Councillor Parker, would you like to present your amendment, and do you have a seconder?
Yes, indeed. I think this is a repeat of sort of debates that have taken place each year for a number of years. The county council does either underspend on the one hand, or receive extra income on the other, and the totality of that essentially means that there is money available for reallocation. The driving force behind the reallocation in the past and continuing has been a desire by the controlling group to build up balances, and build up balances, and build up balances, so much so that, as we know from page one three five, the current total is a hundred and eighty-eight million pounds in balances, reserves. And in one sense, I was slightly cheered up by the comment of councillor Hill, that we may look at some stage in the future at different things, but at the moment, there is no indication that this figure will continue to rise to two hundred million, two hundred and ten million, and one is, on behalf of the people of Lincolnshire, when will this stop, and when will we change from being a local authority into almost a merchant bank? We have a whole list here of balances, or reserves, whichever way to look at, for every conceivable purpose. Now, the chances of those reserves being called on all at the same time is, I would guess, infinitesimal, absolutely infinitesimal. So while, and I made this point to, to people outside on the street this morning, it's a bit like going back to my generation at least, with my mum used to put on the top of the mantelpiece a little jar for the gas money and the electricity money and the rent money. Well, it's the equivalent, she wouldn't have had a mantelpiece long enough to put on all of the pots that we are putting on, on our imaginary mantelshelf, and it's as though all of disasters that could befall any of these reserves would all happen at once. Now, one has to take some sort of, if not mathematical, but some calculation that helps us better understand risk, and risk to my mind is not delivered only through having a hundred and eighty-eight million pounds in reserves. So that's the point that I want to get across, and I think the people of Lincolnshire need to know that a hundred and eighty-eight million pounds is being held in reserve when there's loads of needs, broad needs, one could only look at one of the most controversial issues at the moment in relation to the issue gallery, but we could be talking about two other quite separate issues. There's a similarity in this, in this paper between our recommendations and what we're going to be saying later when it comes to the corporate plan, because both of them are short on dealing with two particular issues. One of them is to do with combating disadvantage, and the second is making clear statements about how we're going to go forward as a council in combating climate change, and not just carbon emissions, because that's a subset of the whole way that we argued at this council last time, that we have to have some urgency about our approach to climate change. So, the things that we're talking about essentially, and these are, in a sense, representative, there could be plenty of other ways of tackling social inequalities if this council put its mind to it, but it's not high on the agenda, probably enterprise would be much higher on the agenda than the real needs of people here and now in Lincolnshire that would be categorised under any sort of method of calculation as being disadvantaged. Okay, it's about social inequality and tackling it, and we do do good things, starting off from, I have to say, the Labour government's approach to sure start children's centres, that's the big building block of combating disadvantage, and we're saying, as a means of showing, demonstrating a commitment of tackling social inequalities, that children's centres is the place to start, and the fact that we've put seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds is a token, it's really to get some thinking going on about the way that we should, on the one hand, be seen as a bank manager and shoveling money into an account over here, while at the same time, there are people, young people, children with families with children, who are experiencing day by day problems which could be, if not removed, then alleviated. So that's our starting point. We have a longstanding commitment, and councillor Davies will be aware, even if he doesn't support it, of a commitment of people in Lincoln, particularly in the west side of Lincoln, who are regularly affected by the traffic coming into our city. I'm not going to dwell on this, but we want to keep this issue on the agenda, so we have a commitment to Park and Ride in Lincoln for preliminary work to start, so that the western side of Lincoln gets some release from where we are at the moment. And I come to broadly the climate change, which we're going to pick up as part of the corporate plan discussion later, but it's about, we lost the argument in this council chamber about showing that we mean business as a county council by wanting to see our commitment to tackling climate change and becoming carbon neutral by twenty thirty, it's far too short a period of time, so in one sense, it sent a message out when the Conservative administration chose to make it twenty fifty, that this is a can that's being kicked down the road. We're trying to bring people's attention back to the here and now again, and the reason that we put in these particular climate change initiatives is to draw attention to the fact that we need to do something now. Point is, time's run out, climate change is important, just as important is tackling social inequalities, and we'll come back to that in our corporate plan.
Councillor Parker, I didn't ask you if you've got a seconder before you started.
I did, yes, it's councillor Parker.
Right, thank you very much. Right, we will now vote. Yes, please, I thought you were sitting down. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow on with, from what Rob was saying, by, again, developing this notion of whether we want this money, this small section of what we are suggesting is allocated to these projects now, or whether we want it in reserves. I think we can evidence, we can prove that the value that we can get for that spend now is in fact showing that we are investing in a way that gives impact to our communities and to our people. This is about investing in our people and in our places, and it's about future-proofing them with a relatively small amount of money. The five hundred thousand pounds that we're suggesting goes into early year support for children with, from deprived communities. It's actually an extension of what we're already doing. It would mean that the number of providers that could give that support and help for young children increases from its current level of sixty to two hundred and eighty. So we're tripling the impact of an already existing scheme, so we're not asking to do anything new, we're asking to extend what we know is already working. This then leaves a permanent legacy of upskilled staff, so what we're asking is that money is invested in our staff, in staff who are working directly with young children, so that, and then that legacy for those children isn't just for this year's cohort, that's a legacy for all of the cohorts that those practitioners then teach in future years. Okay, just, just think about that. So that's money for this year, that then has that huge impact further down the track. Now, this is all evidenced, if you go to a report that the LGA commissioned, it was talking about these early educational interventions for children, this is from a report called Narrowing the Gap in the early years, and it says, "In general, the evidence demonstrates that interventions focused on children in the early years have the potential to improve outcomes that are fundamental to their life chances and to narrow the gap between disadvantaged and other children. Improvements in cognitive development, social behavioural development, and health outcomes can be achieved." We know this is evidence, we can do this now for the long term. We know this works, this is not about squandering money on something that we know, that we're not sure about, this is not experimental, this is improving, this is extending our existing commitment to our children and our young people by doing what we know works and by extending what we're already doing. We're asking for more of the same with this money, not for anything new. So I would really ask, before people stand up and start talking about Labour Group members wanting to waste money and waste time, what bear in mind, this is an extension of what we're doing, we're asking for more of the same. This is about future-proofing our people, our places, it's about future-proofing our children, it's about addressing the fundamental inequalities in our society that are a real barrier for all of our children's development, and it is not something that we should accept.
Thank you. We will now take a vote on the amendment. Oh, sorry, there is a debate, I beg your pardon. Carry on.
Sorry, I thought there were going to be lots of speakers on this. Right, okay. There are a few things I just want to raise. Firstly, we're not talking about spending unnecessarily or willy-nilly, this is about a small, tiny proportion that I can see out of the total budget, so the vast majority is agreed, this is the extra underspend, we're talking about where to put it. I frankly would like to see something done about the rural broadband, I know we've discussed it earlier, but I've actually got a letter that after three years, a member, some people in my area have been still told that there isn't any money available for them, because they don't qualify, it's not cost-effective if you like, but I feel that since public money's there for that purpose, it should actually be for everyone, public services should be for everyone, and I would like, I still would like to see that. On the issue of climate change, I would like to say that I'm really pleased to see the drive towards doing something about this very massive problem. The weekend before last, I attended a climate change conference in Lincoln, would you believe, and we had the Nobel Peace Prize winner there, the professor who presented the scientific data to the UN, the United Nations, which resulted in those changes in their understanding of just how fast global warming, global climate change was happening. We also met some students who will, whose islands where they live, their homes will be uninhabitable before they reach middle age. They showed us an island which had a thousand people living on it, which, and then, a few years ago, and then they showed us it, the same island today, which is now a piece of sand that appears at low tide. What has been discovered is that this climate change is not a steady graph that we thought, what's happening is that the black dust, if you like, on top of the snow that they showed us, and the black rocks are absorbing the heat much quicker, so the change is actually exponential. And it was news to me, just how fast this is happening. It's a new world we're entering, we've really got to up our game. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Doveton. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify post-process, we haven't suspended standing orders, so we can debate the amendment, that will be voted on, and then we'll, if we want to, then can debate the substantive motion, just so members are clear.
Yes.
What we're doing here.
Thank you.
So I'm then obviously going to talk to councillor Parker's amendment to the financial situation. Now, just to repeat, I mean, and I think we need to be clear here, so people understand, I'm sure members understand this, that reserves are there, they can only be used once, so it is quite dangerous to actually use reserves which are one-off, and then put, for example, employ staff or do things which means there's a commitment to the next year, so if you do use those reserves, you do mean then the following year, the budget will have to reflect that spending in what we do. I think in terms of what, of course, members opposite aren't able to tell us, of course, is there any crisis within the council, and indeed is there any area of the council where we're in trouble? As we know, children's services, for example, which areas of that have been quoted, and Mrs Bradwell I'm sure will highlight, is actually excellent. So, you know, it's a bit lazy sometimes, and it is a bit of a argument, lazy argument, more money equals better services. That's not necessarily the case, and I think our children's services are one of the most cost-effective now in the country, are one of the best as well, so I think there's a lesson to us all there. I don't think there's any, yes?
It was made very clear by councillor Parker that we are not talking about spending extra money other than to provide places of improvement, but more services, more services. So it's not a question of quality and failure, it's a question of more than the same, there's a big difference.
Okay, I think that's fair comment, and all I'd say is, now is not the time, it sounds a lot of money, and obviously some of that money referred to is not even available to us, because some of it belongs to schools, some of it is allocated from government. I would support councillor Parker, and there's lots of little reserves, and we do need to look at that, where they're all not going to go wrong, but I repeat, there are risks, big risks to us at the moment, and I'll repeat what I said before, we don't know what's going to happen with the future, and we keep getting these one-off settlements from government, although, and they sort of throw us sort of lifeboats to keep us afloat, so to speak, until we are sure, long-term, what the future funding for local government in this council is, I would strongly recommend against doing anything precipitate at the moment. We talk about the Better Care Fund, a fifty-plus million pound fund, that could all go, we don't know, might not, it might. We talk about business rates, well, if they use the wrong formula, we actually are nets imported about seventy million pounds of business rates. A lot of the business rates generated in London come to Lincolnshire. Again, that could go, we are taking huge sums of money every single year, so although it is tempting to start spending money on things, we have increased spending on all sorts of things, I won't repeat what I said about broadband as well. There are also opportunities, of course, because although, I don't want to paint a picture of a miserable council doing nothing, we are doing no end of things at the moment in terms of infrastructure, which we think about the cars, we think about the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, a hundred and forty million pounds, I think was the latest estimate, we're about to start Grantham Bypass, that's another hundred-plus million pounds, and if we are, if councillor Davies and we are successful in getting this money for Lincoln Southern Bypass, that's another hundred and forty million pounds, and our policy has always been that when we build these roads, we build the roads and then eventually get the money back from developers and all the rest of it. So we are ambitious, and we've shown we've been ambitious, but now is not the time to spend even more money, and I take councillor Parker's point, it's about additionality, I think we need to be clear in future what the long-term status is, and all that money sounds a lot of money, when you've got an annual budget of five hundred million nearly, those reserves will not last long if we do them out, so I would recommend that we don't support this recommendation. I would also say, colleagues will tell us that, a lot of that, I know it's, I say gesture's not the right word, but it's an intent, most of the things that are highlighted, we're already addressing, and I'll take the point about Park and Ride, but I think the policy, as councillor Parker is well aware, let's get the Eastern Bypass built, and then we'll see what, what we can do about that. But of course, again, that's a massive commitment, because it's not just about the money for the Park and Ride, we are then committing to a ten million pound scheme plus a million pound a year to run a Park and Ride, and we can't just have one Park and Ride on one part of the city. So I understand where they're coming from, but I do not think this is the right time, particularly with the political uncertainty in West Lincolnshire.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I do take a bit of exception, councillor Parker, to saying that we don't invest in areas of disadvantage. Over the last few years, we've been delivering lots of schemes, reading schemes, maths schemes in our primary schools, and mostly in Lincoln and Boston, over in Skegness area, so we do do that, and at the moment, we're delivering a scheme in Boston for reading, and in Lincoln for reading and writing, and this is on schools that, obviously, their key stage two results are not as good as they should do, but we do invest in schools, and actually, I have to remind you that we no longer have funding to do school improvement, so we're doing this from my, the revenue money.
they should do, but we do invest in schools and actually have to remind you that we no longer have funding to do school improvement. So we're doing this from my, the revenue money out of children's services and that. So we do do that and, you know, we are all for children being able to attain in schools. In children's centres, you say that you want to extend the speech and language pilot that we're running at the moment, but again, that's a pilot in sixty settings and actually we want to see that pilot can finish and just see whether that is the right, what we're doing is making a difference. There's no point in rolling that out to a hundred and eighty settings if actually it doesn't make the difference for those children with their speech. So we want to do that. If it works, we have every intention to actually roll that out because we know that actually learning and getting children to be able to speak and be able to learn before they go into school and be school-ready is, you know, that's so important to us. And in fact, we are in the process, Heather and her team are in the process at the moment of writing a strategy about children being ready for school. So we are on the case about looking about what do I, what do some of these children need extra to actually go into the classroom on that first day and for the months ahead and to be able to learn like some of their peers. So we are doing that at the moment. And we're also a national pilot to train healthies to undertake speech and language testing when they do the two and two-year, two-and-a-half-year-old check. So actually, much earlier, we're there knowing when children do have a language issue. So we're going to hopefully be able to make those differences before that's picked up in school. With regards maternity hubs, yes, we're working with health on maternity hubs, they obviously deliver that service and we are in the process of rolling them out, but we're always never in an intention to roll them out to every children's centre across this county because actually we need them in the areas where, it was always in the areas where it was going to help mums so they didn't have to go to Lincoln or Boston for their antenatal checks. So I think we are doing it. Yes, to invest all that money, it would be very nice. I think we do put bids in to underspend and that, to actually develop these things. So we are doing it, but probably not as fast as you'd want, but we want to test it out.
Thank you. councillor Whittington, you were next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing me to.
Councillor Mrs. Bradwell, would you put your, could you put yours on please, councillor?
It's not mine out, right, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to come back. I mean, the situation regarding the wider context has already been outlined by a leader of the council in terms of the financial situation we're in. You know, we still don't know the details of what, of the new spending review, we don't know what the outcome of the fair funding, the new arrangements are going to be. There's a big if around the fifty million from the Better Care Fund. And actually, if you then look at page thirteen of the papers in front of you, the statement that the leader has made, he refers to, we're potentially looking at a thirty million pound funding gap by the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. This is the context that the council finds itself in and that is why we're having to commit these funds in, to our reserves. In total, we're looking at about thirteen, fourteen million pounds. It's just over three percent of the total revenue budget of this council. It's about ten days' running costs for this council. Just a few comments on the Labour motion. When I was sort of doing some research on this last night, I was delighted to actually see that currently around maternity hubs, we currently do have twelve maternity hubs in our children's centres in Lincolnshire. The, and we are actually investing, as councillor Bradwell has said, in children's services and in sort of sorting out need and deprivation for children in deprived areas. The leaders already said that regarding the Park and Ride scheme, we need to wait the outcome of the Lincoln Eastern Bypass and the impact it's going to have on traffic flows. But I really want to refer to the long section on climate change policies, which almost kind of thinks, well, will give the impression that we're not actually doing anything. Well, as the leaders already alluded to, we've reduced our carbon footprint by forty percent, we've got a plan to reduce it by a further twenty percent within the next five years. But actually, in this financial year, we are spending some quite substantial sums of money, eight hundred and ten thousand pounds this year to upgrade street lights to LED, two-point-five million pounds on our corporate properties to make sure they are energy efficient. We are now starting to generate electricity via solar panels on buildings this council owns, feeding back into the national grid. We have a one million pound capital fund that this council has contributed a further five hundred thousand pounds to this year and we have a contingency revenue reserve to, in effect, if any other things are identified. We have groups of officers currently out there looking at all of these things around climate change. Mr. Chairman, these things are being addressed. Given the financial situation facing the council, this is not the time to spend any more money but to support the group, the motion before this council to make these provisions into our reserves. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. councillor Whittington, councillor Robin Renshaw.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm trying to work from the tablet. Look at this. Keep the paper fresh, as you say. Well, it can be recycled, you know, we want to, we want, there's plenty of useful recycled paper. I think our amendment, the clues are in words which I don't think Rob envisaged when he actually tabled this amendment, but some of the clues are driving cultural change. I think that the group opposite, they're seeing amendment by the Labour Group and straight away the iron curtain comes down. Now, that's not in the best interest of cooperation and I think we have to work together. And some of the things on this are quite valid, no matter what they might say, because we're mentioning here roof PV cells, yeah, somebody might turn me off the back of their hand. How many PV, what percentage of councilly-owned buildings have PV cells across this county? Not many. So it's, so that's certainly an issue that needs addressing, there's one there. The Park and Ride, we've got a bit of a Park and Ride working now out of wait rows in Lincoln and it's, the take-up on it is surprising even me. So there is potential there to get on to that and start using it. And I know that when the LED is completed, we'll be reassessing all traffic flows in the Greater Lincoln area, so that will be a good opportunity when that's, when that is done to do so. Excuse me, Chairman.
Take your five seconds off.
Take your five seconds, yeah, you know it. And there was the thing about carbon management and it's not within our purview, but we are burning fossil fuels in gas-fired power stations, counted or rate or not, just to produce electricity. So the drivers should be on sustainable electricity and not imported gas to fund power stations. I'll just keep it short there because I'm sure we're going to win this one.
There are no other speakers, I understand, so we will now vote on the amendment. Those in favour of the amendment.
That's close.
Those against? Any abstentions? I think that those against have won on this occasion. Can we now vote on the motion? Well, we're going to have a debate on the motion, aren't we?
Chairman, I've got nothing further to add, but if members, of course, want to speak to the substantive motion, very welcome to respond.
Thank you. Haven't got any speakers at the moment. Well, I was going to do that because I haven't had any speakers. Right, we will now vote on the motion. Those in favour? And those against? Any abstentions? Well, I think that is carried, the motion is carried. So we move on to item nine, which is the political balance on committees and subcommittees, allocation of places to political groups and appointment of chairman and vice-chairman of committees. councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. I have received legal advice on this and I also faithfully follow the legal advice. So what I'm proposing is we treat the two separate items in bold as separate items. So the first item then is the changes to political balance on the council. There has actually been one change, there's been one resignation from the Conservative Group who now stands as independent, but actually as we've gifted that individual his, a place on the children's committee, I'm advised by Democratic Services, there is no need to change the political balance. So I'd move that we note that and effectively these things stay as they are. So I presume we just now take a vote and then we move on.
Well, we need a second before, don't we?
Oh, I do need a second, yeah.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Mrs. Overton, you wish to speak?
Chairman, it does sound all very reasonable, but if the seat on that committee is only there by gift rather than by right of proportion, it's a slightly lesser position, lesser opportunity and I would like that person to have that person, that position because of the numbers, because they're there. I don't know if that can be, can be done. Thank you. Maybe not.
No. And taking eighty percent of everything, but we're so kind in this side of the chamber that we are happy that councillor Fox, to be honest, is doing a good job on children's services, he makes an effective contribution, ex-chairman, of course, so we're happy to do that. But I'm afraid what councillor Overton is suggesting is not possible and Nigel's going a little bit grey and I thought the thought of putting him through, if you sat through, I'll tell you, going through this political balance thing is nobody's idea of fun, I can tell you straight away. So Nigel is very keen that we could, we stay as we are and hopefully the council will agree to that. Otherwise, he's going to have a lot of work to do.
Thank you very much. Right, this is recommendation one. And those in favour? Those against? So that is carried almost unanimously. And is there a mover and a second for recommendation two?
Recommendation two then, Chairman, which actually follows on from the discussion we've just had because as councillor Fox has resigned as chairman of Children's Scrutiny Committee, the proposal is that first of all, the current, the current vice-chairman, councillor Kendrick, becomes the chairman and then the vacancy thus created is filled by councillor Alexander Maughn. In addition, on scrutiny panel A, we are also proposing that councillor Parkin is no longer made chairman and replaced by councillor Matt Fido. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second, though?
I second it, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any speakers on this? No. Well, then we can go. councillor Parker?
What you said, councillor Hill.
Could you switch your microphone on, please?
Yep. Okay. Oh, is it? All right, okay, all right. Okay, fine. councillor Hill, what you said in relation to the change of the vice-chair of the scrutiny panel A did come as a bit of a surprise. councillor Renshaw indicates that it wasn't discussed at the leaders meeting, sorry, the chairs meeting yesterday and I wouldn't mind an explanation. I'd like to speak on behalf of councillor Parkin, who I don't think has done anything of an exemplary job and I just wonder what the explanation is for that, for that change. But while I'm speaking and just to save time, the deputy group leader position, which is on page one-five-nine, I'd like to move Robin Renshaw and delete councillor Parkin from that.
Somebody's got it. Thank you for that. Just to clarify, obviously I did, you weren't at the group leader meeting, you had mentioned to attend to East Midlands, so I did have a discussion with councillor Renshaw about that. So if you're happy afterwards to have a discussion, I really want to be there. But I think what I say is an opportunity to try and bring on young talent and Matthew was joining us very quickly, just two years ago, very young. I'm very pleased actually today that we are promoting two very young councillors. I think we all accept that maybe it's too expensive, but there was a discussion between ourselves and councillors. Sorry, I'm not sure either about that or not, but I have heard from all people that it was.
Thank you for that. Right. Those in favour of recommendation, recommendation two? Thank you. Those against? Any abstentions? No. I think those on the right have it substantially. Excuse me. So we go to item ten, the Lincolnshire County Council Corporate Plan two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty-nine, a report by the head of paid services being circulated. Is there a mover and a second, though?
Thank you, Chairman. So obviously, as members are aware, we are, because where we are in sort of the cycle of the council and indeed in terms of changes, because as members are well aware, we had a very settled period where, you know, we had a chief executive here for twelve years and a bunch, a bunch of, is that the right word? I was going to say a crowd of directors. And what's a collective for a director? A doers of directors. And obviously, due to many reasons, we now know that we, although we have some directors who have carried on, we have a new management team effectively at the council and obviously under the, under the direction of Debbie Barnes. And obviously, we, it is appropriate at this time to think, to actually refresh what the council's about and it's probably a right time in terms of the political cycle that political parties can actually then put their input into what, what they're doing. As the controlling group of the, current controlling group of this council, I think it's appropriate that we put forward a vision as to what we would like to do. So there has been some work done to look at that vision so that can inform then how we move forward. And it is very much about team working, working together and the one-team approach, similar to what councillor Davies has been doing with the environment. So we've outlined, it is very broad brush at this stage, this is the start of it and there's a lot of work to be done then, once hopefully we agree this, that we, the detail of that can be, will be dealt with through the directors, how that can inform that, that ways of working, things like commissioning, you know, we do need to look at how we roll that effectively across the case or across the council. And although we are very successful in many things we do, I think we all, you know, with the change of management, there probably is an opportunity to refresh the ways we do and just spruce ourselves up a bit so we can be even better and, and, you know, make sure we are working as one council. And although we are very successful in many ways, I think some, some areas of organisation we probably do need to update the way we do business. So that is the plan and also a plan as to what our vision is for the county of Lincolnshire and how this council can then deliver to that vision. So the sort of council we would, county area we'd like to see, the area we represent, what we think we would like that the county to be looking like in, say, ten years' time, what sort of things we try. I mean, obviously, I think events sometimes overtake you, but what we'd like to try and aspire to try and encourage the county to look like in those future years. So hopefully the council will agree with this, these proposals, but obviously I'm aware there are, again, some amendments from, from the Labour Group, so I'll stop there, Chairman, and move it and obviously wait for the amendment to come.
Thank you very much, councillor Hill. Do you have a second, though?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to second that and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is an amendment from the Labour Group which has been circulated. councillor Parker, do you have a second, though? And that is? Thank you.
Based on two clear propositions, we separate clear blue water and red water, call it the colour of your life, between the proposals before us and second and our. First one amounts to poverty, partly mentioned in the report, the papers, the report about the quality of the South Bank. Secondly, on the question of commitment.
councillor Parker, could you put on your microphone, please?
Okay.
That's better.
But there is, just so that you get the message very clearly, combating disadvantage and a fairer society. And I say that in inverted commas simply because when you look through other corporate plans across the country, you can tell those who are from the Conservative Party in control, or those from Labour. Now, one of the interesting things is, if you take a view of history, and, and I think it's fair to say Theresa May is history, just for the moment, if you look at the Conservative Party manifesto for the election in 2017, her commitment was to make Britain a stronger, safer, more fair society, more fair society, with a leading statement in the 2017 Conservative Party manifesto. So, you know, there is shared ground here, and a point has been made consistently, that people from the other side of this house would actually do anything than take on board a Labour proposal under any circumstances. If we wanted to move an amendment to delete a comma and insert a full stop, it would be voted against even if it was grammatically correct. And the point is that this is a corporate plan... I will look, when we, when we talk, when we talk outside this meeting, Martin, it probably won't take very long. I'm not going to book an appointment for two hours as to, okay. The point that I'm making is that we ought to recognise that we have a diverse community in Lincolnshire. We have people who typically, in, in society's distribution of goods, get left behind, whether it's people, women, for example, in all sorts of relationships. If we talk about older people who haven't been able to, to save money, we talk about disadvantage in a broader sense, kids going to children's centres, every, there is disadvantage in every community, and it's about trying to make our county more equal and a fairer society. And there's nothing in, in the proposals that are coming before us that acknowledges that explicitly. It may be they're hidden, but it is not explicit. I, I just want to continue that line of reasoning, because without it, what we end up doing is ignoring the contribution that people can make to our society. And, and I talk about, people are socially excluded by virtue of age, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation, health, lack of mobility, you know, if you can't get around in a, in rural Lincolnshire, and there's not many, very many bus services, then how do you contribute towards your society? That's the, the key message that this first proposal is about, that we need, enhancing quality of life has to recognise that some people can enhance their own quality of life by virtue of their background, social class, educational qualifications, and we want to see some recognition and some drive towards the delivery of that recognition. Looking after the environment is another point that I want to come, wanted to now come back to, which is from the previous budget debate, which is how do we, in a sense, build into everything that we do, not just the idea of delivering services that are fair and equal to everybody, but a recognition that we've got a responsibility, not just for the people that live in Lincolnshire at the moment, but for future generations. And that, that's an important statement. And again, looking at this particular proposal that's coming before us as a starting point, the Conservative paper, we don't see a serious statement about the environment, about climate change, about carbon management, about all of the things that will make our life different in the future. It's not as though, for example, that this is an abstract issue, because for a lot of people in different parts of the, of the country, for example, in Birmingham, for example, miles away from the coast, it's not likely that there's going to be anything specific happens in Birmingham compared to any, anywhere else. But when we have got a third of our land likely to be underwater in forty or fifty years, then there is a real issue here in Lincolnshire, an absolute real one. Talking to Graham, a colleague from Mablethorpe, you know, what, what does Mablethorpe think about the absence of any clear statement about the way we're going to tackle climate change? Because it's not just abstract, it's about people having problems getting insurance on houses at the moment. Now, these are the things that our view about what our corporate plan should look like starts off with our vision for Lincolnshire is a bit different to about twenty words, which talks about high aspiration, the opportunity to live their best life, thriving environments, we would like to see protecting, protection for a star, good value council services. We've set out four things in, in reasonable detail about Lincoln, we, our vision is about a great place to live, that that will include, for example, taking, you know, the work that councillor Davies does, about people being able to get around quickly. We accept that as part of the life of, of a community, about Lincoln, Lincolnshire being a great place to live. Okay, enhancing quality of life, we want people's lives to be sequentially getting better, generation by generation. We want to look after our environment, and we need to make a claim that that is where Lincolnshire is coming from. And we want resident satisfaction, you know, we want to deliver the sort of services that people want, and here I come back to a point that wasn't really, I think, fully understood. Yes, we have got services, but we want to see more of them in the right locations, so that people can easily access the services. And I agree with councillor Bradwell about, yes, we are doing good work in children's centres, but as I'm sure that, that we could do more, and, and that's the point that this gets involved in. It talks about whether our services are delivered by us or contractors, that our residents get second, second to none level of satisfaction, in other words, good quality services. So there is our, there are proposals. And just one final point, and I'll be quick. On the second page, we want to see some reference to older people, it's pretty slim, given we've got a high level of older people in our popular, in our county, it's pretty slim on people growing older, and we wanted to see something specific about people who grow older should be helped to remain active and independent for as long as possible. I move this amendment.
Councillor Mrs. Parkin? Miss Parkin?
Thank you, chairman. In terms of developing a corporate strategy, we're, we're looking at something, we're looking at a, at a strategy, a document that will be with us now for ten years, till probably most of us may, may or may not be in the chamber, who knows, where, when we next review it, where we will be. If you're looking at a long-term destination like that, you need to know where you're heading as you set out. Likewise, if you play, if you're aiming for an archery bullseye, you need to be looking at the target before you fire, otherwise you don't stand a chance. And I just want us to bear that in mind. As we're developing this strategy, as we're developing these plans, do we actually know what our target is? What is our vision? Where do we want, as a council to be in ten years' time? Where do we want, where, where do we want our residents to be in ten years' time? What's our plans? What's our vision? And I don't sense that from this initial document. I don't sense it has that clear steer of what the ambition looks like, what it feels like. Where's our opportunity as backbenchers going to be to involve ourselves in this process? Certainly, as a twin-hatter, I know that the district council, there's already been a series of workshops for us to feed into that process. The public consultation, what is that going to look like? Are we going to consult the public? That isn't there in this, and it would have been really useful for us to have faith in the ambition that we're trying to create if that was there. As I've just said, this plan is going to run to 2029. That would have been the most fantastic opportunity to grasp that plan, to go carbon neutral by 2030, because then that plan and this plan could have aligned. Instead, what we've done is knocked that into the grass until 2050. That isn't ambitious, that isn't, that, that isn't the vision. It takes more than a handful of councillors in an organisation going paperless, as welcome as that is, to really give the, the message to Lincolnshire that that is our vision for the county, that we have ambition for the county. And I will say now what I said then, that if we went for 2030 and we missed it, we would still have achieved more in missing that ambitious target than if we just kick it into the long grass until 2050. And I get that sense with this entire process, that if we're not clear what our aim is, what our visions are, if we don't make them ambitious enough, and this document to me doesn't do that, and it, our amendments do, helps a long way, but the original one doesn't, then what is it we're trying to achieve? Is it just to have another piece of paper that we can say exists, but that we as members and our communities don't have a buy-in? Let's do this, let's do this with ambition, and let's do it properly, and let's just realign what we've got in paper today to make it really clear that we're showing commitment to ourselves as a council, but also for our residents for the next decade ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bruis, you were next.
Thank, thank you, chairman. Mine's very, very brief. I generally support it, but I would encourage that on page 168, where we say, live their best life, grammatically that is a bit dodgy, and I would encourage you to say, live their life to the full or enjoy life to the full, because actually, it's their only life, because if we're actually recommending re-incarnation, I think I want to be a rabbit on Salisbury Plain.
Councillor Renshaw, you were next.
Thank you, chairman. I nearly forgot what I was going to say, because I'm too one of the other. But I think it's, I think it's been made clear that, that we want more councillor involvement in, in this process. I'm not going to go for any particular points, but I did take the opportunity to look at several, about half a dozen councils who already produced that document, and some of those councils' documents, soon as you opened and went, wow, they're in the face with the detail in there, and it made the public want to read. Now, obviously, our papers are at a formative stage, so it won't be wanting the public to read, it wants us to read. But that's the message that I got from those six, six other councils, that we must make it so the public want to read it and read to the end of the twenty pages, because it's all right putting things online, but it's, it's easy, there, there's no way of knowing whether the people read page eighteen, and I'm sure they didn't. It's easy to just say, oh, I read that, and that's, that's that. So it's, it's, it's a start, and I think we want to move forward together and engage all members of the council. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, you were next.
Thank you very much, chairman. I just want to pick up a couple of points. It's like, we, we stand in this chamber, it's like we've done nothing on the environment over the last few years. Now, I was a member of this council when all the leaders came together, including Martin, and we signed the Nottingham Declaration on Climate Change. And as a result of that, those signatures, this council moved forward with a carbon management plan. I have to say, as has already been covered by councillor Hill earlier, a number of councils did not take the actions they should have done when they put their signature onto that document. We are where we are today because we've taken action, because we've invested in managing carbon, and that is why our carbon emissions have fallen. So in terms of our, our vision, a thriving environment, if you turn over, it makes it very clear in the bullet point that we will look as an ambition, where people and communities will have high aspirations, to protect the environment for the future. You can't have a thriving environment without protecting it. So that addresses the issues that have been raised regarding the coast. We all know it's challenged, we all know the challenges that exist there, that's why councillor Pollan and I work so closely with the Environment Agency and others to find long-term solutions to this. They're not things you can write on a bit of paper today, but we all know where we want to go and what we want to achieve, which is to provide safe communities, safe places for people to live, work, and safe places for people to invest in in the future, because without investment, things wither and die. And I would say, you know, looking at what point councillor Renshaw made about documents and people wanting to read them, we're in strange political times, as we know. If, if people don't deliver on the things that they said they're going to deliver on in manifestos and other documents, then there won't be much point, any of us publishing anything in the future, because no one in our county will trust a word that any politicians say. So nationally, if we don't sort out those national issues, you know, we will not have a vision for Lincolnshire because no one will trust us to deliver anything. So we need to get on with a clear vision and clear ambition for Lincolnshire, and I'm very clear that this is the way forward, and I am sure that the public will engage with us as politicians and make clear what they think they want to support and what they don't. I've always said that we're, we will be judged as politicians by what we hand on to next generation. We are only as good as what we do and what we actually deliver, not what we talk about, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Councillor Mrs. Bradwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm a little puzzled, because actually, this is the first time, obviously, that we've brought this vision for our new corporate plan to council. And obviously, people are, councillor Parkin, and has said that, you know, they want more involvement. I mean, actually, if you read the recommendations, it does say that, you know, that we will be working with OSMB and other stakeholders. This is the first, this is the, an outlying bullet point of our new corporate plan, but underneath all that, there will be lots of other information. I actually, I don't believe that we need to go into a lot of detail at the moment. It does set out, you know, what we are going to, this is about our residents, it is about, you know, making our money go further and making sure that what we spend our money in, on is, is high-quality services. But actually, I, I just think it does set out our ambitions. I don't think they need to be long at the moment, but I think what goes underneath all this, which will come later, will have that detail in it. So I, I believe that, you know, this is, this is the right idea, not, not lots of words, because I believe that will be in, in the other document. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Bradwell. Councillor Mrs. Brockway?
Thank you, chairman. I think this is actually one of those situations where an awful lot agree about an awful lot of things here, and some of this is just about languaging, and I think we have to be a little bit careful here. If you look at the amendment, there is a list. We're talking about all of our residents, and then there is a list given about inclusion, all of which should be included. But the danger with that is those people who are left off the list, you know, poverty, badly educated, people who are not IT literate, looked-after children, there is an extended list. And when we're talking about all our residents, I think that is much, much more appropriate. And with regard to the climate change agenda and things that have been talked about here, you know, to respond positively to the climate change agenda, well, I just wonder what people who say that think we've been doing for all these years. I mean, the council is actually quite a long way ahead of the game when it comes to many other public bodies and private sector bodies as well, and has taken it seriously for so long that we have a significant carbon percentage reduction. And I think to imply otherwise in fairly loose statements actually misleads the public. Councillor Parkin mentioned about consultation. The consultations and public engagements carried out by this council are hundreds and hundreds in any one year. They're varied, they're detailed, they are followed, they are tracked, and I know, because I helped write the policy and I follow it. And the detail of our consultation and the seriousness with which it's taken is not necessarily visible all the time, because you're not necessarily going to know that one of our teams is sitting in Asda on a Saturday morning getting random comments from random shoppers. But these things are going on all the time, along with a formal legally-based consultation. So there again, I think we must be careful not to imply that we're doing less than we are, because that damages public's confidence and runs the risk of deviating energy and money into things that maybe just to respond to a slightly exaggerated perception of what we're not doing. And I think when it comes to this business, I mean, you're holding up our papers, you know, it takes more than a few councillors, of course it does, but a few councillors have to be part of the change as well. I mean, West Lindsay has been paperless for many years, and after an original frantic meeting where nobody could get at their papers, it settled down immediately, and that has saved that council literally hundreds of thousands. So these few councillors, and there are twice the number of councillors here than there were there, will also be saving hundreds of thousands, and over the years, that is more than just a few councillors not having their papers. So it is wrong to downplay what is being done here, because it does damage public confidence, and it is misleading. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Brockway. Councillor Mrs. Overton? councillor mrs Overton.
Thank you very much chairman. I hope that every time somebody tries to add something to another paper, it's not considered that they're downplaying the council and doing the council down, because I'm sure that's not the intention. As has been pointed out, and the same in my council, we did have a number of sessions where we talked about issues, I think there were five, and so today's, we're all talking about community services, another day we're all talking about housing, so in that way, we went through the whole of the business plan involving all councillors, and then in addition to that, working with the public at particular sessions, talking about issues, what do they think's important, what good ideas have they got, how could they improve things, and this is the way, I believe, to drive a corporate strategy which is founded and based in the communities with the engagement of people who really know and understand what it's like to live in their street. And that, I feel, would be more helpful, because I don't think you'd have got an alternative or additions put forward if we'd had that opportunity in advance to put that in place. So I think, I think a trick has been missed here, and perhaps it's to do with the summer break and all of that, but it would, you know, there is an opportunity there to be inclusive and engaging and collaborative, as was originally suggested. The Nottingham Declaration, I also supported that, I'm very pleased to, and I think it was a springboard to actually bring some changes which were really positive that our council and indeed other councils have done. However, we're not just talking about what this council does, we're also talking about what is done outside of this council by all of the organisations around us that we work with, and that's, again, brings back the point about engagement. So we don't need just housing estates without buses, without cycle paths, and sometimes without doctor surgeries or schools. What we want is to build communities that really work. We don't need roads without proper maintenance, it's about making sure that we look holistically at the whole issue. If we talk about attracting investment into the county, yes, but be careful, make sure that it is investment that is going to work for our residents. If it's just got a huge factory next to you, you know, it might be difficult. You've got to think carefully about what is going to work, what is going to build on our businesses that we've got currently in place, and that I think is really important, to make sure that our local businesses thrive. Making money go further, again, there's a risk that you might say, well, closing all our services, peripheral access points, will make it more cost effective, but is it better for our residents? Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you chairman, there just seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding of what this document is all about. It is a corporate plan, a vision document, and as councillor Bradwell has already stated, beneath it and in the recommendations, there is a lot more work to underpin this vision. So again, I think trying to put lots of stuff in there, and as councillor Brockway has quite rightly pointed out, once you start going down that road, let's put this in, that in, there's inevitably going to be stuff missed out. There will be a lot of detail under this, which of course the council members will be engaged with that through the OSMB and other fora. So I think people talk about, let's put all this other stuff in there, they are fundamentally missing the point, and we are talking about an overall vision for the county. And I'm a bit surprised that the Labour Group wanted to delete the four sort of aspirations where, which I'm just trying to find, where we are in the, to, to, just so everybody understands, that we have four sort of key bullet points, and it's no good having a vision document which goes on and on and on, because frankly, nobody will take any notice. So I don't know, I thought having high aspiration, the opportunity to live, people to live their best life, have thriving communities, and I thought that would have encompassed all the issues about the environment, and of course, good value council services. My view, all of those aspirations, if you were there, are covered, and unfortunately, I don't know why the Labour Group felt that they, they all had to be swept away to put in a quite a partial document about some stuff that they particularly want in there as opposed to stuff that has been left out. So I can't support, I don't think we can support that series of it. We will support you however on some issues, Labour Group, councillor Parker, just to, actually I agree with councillor Bruis, and I think we, I think you are correct in terms of, at the lower end of your, your proposed amendments, that the enjoy life to the full is much better than the phraseology which has been, is better than live their best life, so we would, we do support that, I don't think we're able to do that individually, so what I propose is, and I think that's allowed, if, if this motion is defeated, we are prepared to encompass that change in, if I'm allowed to amend that motion accordingly. I think the other thing is that, I think it's, there is a fundamental difference, because from the Conservative approach to moving forward to a Labour approach, I think we are, and Conservatives are all about aspiration, helping people so that everybody is supported, those who are doing well are supported even more, those who are doing not well are also supported, it's all about aspiration and you, and making sure we help everybody. Labour Party always generates into, well, somebody better off than that person, let's drag them all down to the lower level, because that would be fairer. Life isn't fair, and I think what we want to be fair about is giving people the opportunity to, and the county to give an opportunity, to do all we can to encourage that, facilitate it, not pick out particular individual groups with special treatment, whether they be the wealthy and the well off or the able, or whether they be the poor or the people. Yes, if people are struggling for whatever reason, they will need additional support, but it's a mindset, a bit like the debate on, on Brexit. It's all about, do you see an opportunity or do you see a threat? And that is a bit of a, so I, my view of this council and my group is that we feel we should be aspirational, encouraging people and all those things, and actually picking bits out, and frankly, bluntly, some of the amendments is long-winded and not really appropriate for, for a high, high, a, a vision statement of a sort of, at a top level. There'll be ample opportunities to put on, put some bones on to this as it goes through the process, if it's agreed today. And finally, I would encourage the Labour Group, as they are so keen on the environment, to finally support our proposals in terms of street lighting, that has been a massive positive for the environment, so there's now an opportunity for them to agree that that is, although it has been controversial, it has been a very positive move for the environment, and that they should now support those proposals. So with that, I would, I, I can't support the amendments apart from the one bit, so we do sometimes support them, when they, when they have sensible proposals to make.
Thank you very much. Right, we are voting on the amendment. Those in favour of the amendment? Those against the amendment? Right, this motion's been slightly altered, so with the agreement of the council, I invite anyone to speak on the altered motion for clarification on point two, second section, replace...
Live their best life.
Live thereafter, their best, life with enjoy life to the full. So. councillor Parker.
I think that's, I think that this gives me the opportunity to comment on some of the things that have been said. I, I think the starting point that I want to make is that this paper, the one that we're discussing, not the amendment, but the, the main paper, is your paper, not ours, it's your paper. If there'd have been a discussion, what I would going to call informally, that would have brought representatives of all the political groups together, then we could have spoken with one voice. That, you may have then, outside of this, this debate, this discussion here, this public forum, accepted some of the things that we said. I, I know it's crumbs, but we, you have accepted some of it, and it may well be that we might have been able to persuade people that this was a different sort, and we would have accepted some in that trade-off that goes on when political groups work together. That wasn't the case. So now this is your document, okay, and the council will own it, and that puts, you know, us in, in that difficult situation of wanting to and needing to repeat some of the things that I'm saying here and that we believe.
Okay, that's, that's the first point. The second point is this question of long-winded, which is your words, about this. Now, if you, if you really do take a detailed look, and there's loads and loads of corporate plans, the vision statement is about this long typically, with Nottinghamshire County Council, Conservative, if you look at, for example, any of the London boroughs, Kensington and Chelsea.
What's order, mister chairman?
I am making...
Carry on.
Do you, chairman?
Carry on, carry on. With your point of order.
The amendment was in two parts, I think the leader of the council made it abundantly clear, and that we voted down the first page, which is saved here in the amendment, and we voted for the change on page two. I don't think we should be open to other debates, we've made a vote, I think we should leave it at that.
Carry on councillor Parker.
Yep, thank you for that councillor Strangell. The, the point that I'm making is that, that there's an expectation that the values are set out clearly. Now, it may well be that the people of Lincolnshire want 16 words, 16 words over four particular statements, and that's all that we've got here as values, just 16 words, it's not even almost a sentence if we just add them up, just looking at them. High aspirations, no, our values, you can read them, can't you? High aspirations, count the numbers. That is the vision. Please, please, I don't want it either councillor Hill.
We are inadvertently, councillor Parker, misleading the council, because there are two pages and there are lots of bullet points on the back, so to say this doesn't suit people, please miss thinking, I'm sure it doesn't mean a true one, you can ignore all those...
I'm not, I'm under the heading, our vision, then it goes on to our ambitions, I am sticking with the notion of our vision. Take that as 16 words, why then do you have another heading saying, our ambitions and keeping on going? I'm saying the message that people want to get across clearly. I remember the most famous one in the world from John Kennedy, which was to get a man on the moon by the end of the 60s, that's a vision, simple statement, that's the sort of one that you're giving. I'm arguing about people expect more, so that's one point.
councillor Parker, just one second, that for the benefit of councillors, we are now debating the motion.
We are, and the motion is essentially to accept...
Yes, it's for councillors to know that we are debating the motion.
The motion, the motion itself as amended by councillor Hill. Okay, well, okay, but we're, we're voting, we're discussing, aren't we, the main paper that came to us? Yes, and I'm examining the, the fact that under our vision there's only 16 words, and that's the point that I'm making, very simple and clearly. When it, when it comes to the discussion, that, that discussion about how we move forward, I would have liked to have seen it to be, as I said earlier, much more collegiate in that approach. Now, that was not thrown open to the, the whole council, wasn't thrown open to group leaders, it was a corporate approach which is yours. We're voting against it, and for the reason is that we think that we could have contributed so much towards influencing people if we'd have been given the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We will now vote on the mo...
This is the opportunity to put, this is, this is the forum where you can have your alternative vision, and that's as, that's as being repeated, so that's life, because you are, you are voting for those that are here. I mean, I do think there's a fundamental issue here about these documents, still I'm sure people have lots of that organisations, councils and all the rest of it have acres and acres of words and words and words, not trying what we've put down, but my, my view is let's keep it snappy so that these people take an interest in it. If you look past in time, what, what, you know, what's the, if you're creating a vision, let's go back to Harold Wilson, the wife he's revolutioned, that was his and that caught off. Margaret Thatcher, labour isn't working, it was negative and that caught off. The Brexit debate, take back control. Tony Blair, education, education, education. So my clear view, and a clear view of the council, is that let's keep these documents brief to the point, bullet points. Yes, we could create a long pistol, but frankly, nobody will take any notice of it, including most of the others that are here. So that's our vision, and I come back to the point, we need this, there is a lot of work to do, because the vision's there, and there's going to be a lot of work for councillors and directors and everybody in this chamber to make sure we inform that detailed work, and there is an opportunity. But I think this is a document that, and frankly, I'm not terribly convinced that councillor Parker would totally agree if we had a conversation, he would come in and say, yeah, I agree. I've never had that, and frankly, that's the work of opposition, is it not, to actually challenge and put an alternative, he's done that, unfortunately for him and his group, that wasn't successful, but they've made their point, that we are of view, this is the right document, and following this, if it's agreed, we will do a lot of work, we will, councillors and poppers, to make sure this vision then comes to reality with targets and opportunities.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers before we go to the vote? councillor mrs Talbot.
Chair, there's a point of information actually, I've forgotten about it. Can you hear me? So many, I don't want to...
Try it again, try again.
Okay, thank you. I'm absolutely dumbfounded, because these four resolutions on page seven of the Order of Proceedings are abundantly clear, and I'm sat here wondering why this argument is continued. We've had the vote, we've agreed, and it means that this vision will be adopted, but the work will continue in order to flesh out the actual detail, and people will be included working with the executive, the OSMB, other stakeholders to develop the details of the corporate plan, which will then come back to full council in December. So quite honestly, I don't know why we're still sat here arguing about words here, words there, when there's every opportunity, cross-party, to flesh out this document in order for it to be approved in December.
Thank you for that. If there are no other speakers, we will go to the vote, and we are voting on the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Then that is clearly, clearly carried. Item 11 is an executive decision, rule 17, of special urgency, a report by the leader of the council has been circulated, is there a mover and a secondor?
Thank you chairman, obviously this relates to a decision which had to be made due to a contract issue with waste, so I don't think it's controversial, so we needed to make a quick decision so that that particular service could continue unimpeded, so I'll just move it, thank you chairman.
Thank you, is there a secondor? To reserve your spot right to speak. Right, we will, if there are no speakers, including councillor Paul, we will move to the vote, those in favour? Those against? None. Any abstentions? Then that is carried. Members are reminded that there will be a drop-in session in committee room two after the meeting and after lunch, for members to view the new website, and also that there is a corporate pairing session being held at two o'clock in committee room one. And also members are reminded to collect their posts from their pigeonholes after the meeting. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.